Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam, and on behalf of the city and all of council, I welcome you to council chambers this evening for a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. City council for Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held to get opinions from the public. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and then the floor will be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaws. Those that have pre-registered, and we have some people pre-registered, will be given the first opportunity to speak, and if you haven't pre-registered, the floor will be open after this list is done. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input about these bylaws. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But there are some rules. It's not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or with those in the audience who might have a different perspective on a given bylaw. So on behalf of council, I'm going to ask you all to restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw that's on the table at that time, to be as brief and concise as possible. We're asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak can speak. You're permitted to speak more than once. If you've got some good stuff, please get back to the back of the line, and we'll hear from you again, as many times as you need, as long as you're providing new or additional information. I ask that the audience be respectful of each submission and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interrupting. And that includes clapping, so please, no clapping, no booing, no hissing, or no heckling to any presentation made this evening. As chair of the hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive of anyone, or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Now, please note, if you have a written submission, any notes or any documents that you want to be part of the permanent record on this, you have to hand it in to the deputy city clerk prior to the adjournment of the related item on the agenda. After that item is adjourned, council can't receive any more information, it's actually the law, we can't receive any more information after the adjournment of the item until after we've voted on it. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we will have a regular council meeting in order that council can give consideration to these items on this agenda, as well as some items on our regular council agenda. However, if during the public hearing any council member wishes more information or has asked some questions, and we need another week or two to get more information about that item, an item can be deferred and might not be dealt with tonight. So I now call on Ms. Law to introduce the other, the bylaws on tonight's agenda. Development staff to make a presentation on the first item on the agenda.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one is bylaw number 4303-2012. It's a text amendment, and it's an application to amend the city of Coquitlam zoning bylaw to implement changes in the RT1 and RT3 zones.
Good evening, Your Worship, and members of council. My name is Chris Jarvey, development planner with the city. This is city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment would amend the RT1, RT2 family residential, and RT3 triplex and quadruplex residential zones. The amendments include revising and adding definitions to the bylaw, several housekeeping changes to bring the RT3 zone into conformity with the recent housekeeping amendments to residential zones adopted by council in January, and several substantive changes with the intent to improve administration and implementation of housing choice developments using the RT1 and RT3 zones. Some of these proposed amendments include adding a minimum parking space size requirement for duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, a minimum lot width for corner lots in the RT1 zone, reducing the minimum building setback for carriage houses, garden cottages, and garages in order to accommodate all required parking within the lot width, and adding a maximum height for detached parking structures to the RT3 zone. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw 4303-2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvey. Any questions of council? Seeing none, are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Not that we expected any. Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Item two, bylaw number 4321-2012, is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to permit and regulate mobile cart vehicle and special event vending.
Good evening, Your Worship, and council members. This, too, is a city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment that would permit vending carts and vending vehicles to operate on private property as an accessory use to a permitted principal use in the RM5, RM6 apartment residential zones, the C1, C2, C4, C5, and C7 commercial zones, the CS1 and CS2 service commercial zones, and the M8 retail and light industrial zone. In addition, the proposed amendments would permit special event vending to occur on the P1 civic institutional and P5 special park institutionally-zoned properties. If approved, the proposed amendments would permit and regulate vending cart, vending vehicles, and special event vending, which historically has not been allowed or regulated by the city. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4321. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? For the third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? This is going to go really quickly tonight. Maybe not. Declare this item closed.
Item three, bylaw numbers 4314 and 4316-2012, application to revise the land use designation and zoning of 3501 David Avenue.
The subject site is located on the north side of the future David Avenue extension and east of Burke Mountain Creek. The site is currently designated small village, single-family, large village, single-family, street-oriented village home, conventional townhomes, and civic and major institutional. Zoning on the site and to the north and south is A3 agricultural and resource. Zoning to the west is RS7 small village, single-family, and RS8 large village, single-family residential. The site is currently vacant. The applicant seeks to redesignate the site to large village, single-family, conventional townhomes, environmentally sensitive area, and civic and major institutional, and rezone the site to RS8 large village, single-family residential, RT2 townhouse residential, P1 civic institutional, and P5 special park to facilitate the development of approximately 26 one-family residential lots, one townhouse parcel, and one parcel for the future northeast Coquitlam Fire Hall. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaws numbers 4314 and 4316.
Mr. Fire Hall, are there any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? Third and final time, any speakers to this item? Seeing none, declare this item closed.
Item four, bylaw numbers 4317 and 4318-2012, is an application to revise the land use designation and zoning of 3,500 block Princeton Avenue.
This site is located between Smiling Creek and Burke Mountain Creek, generally between Highland and Galloway avenues. The site currently is designated small village, single-family, large village, single-family, large, single-family, street-oriented village home, neighborhood parks and natural open spaces, and environmentally sensitive area. Zoning on the site and to the north, south, east, and west is A3 agricultural and resource. The site is currently vacant. The applicant seeks to redesignate the site to small village, single-family, large village, single-family, large, single-family, conventional townhomes, neighborhood parks and natural open spaces, and environmentally sensitive area, and to rezone the site to RS7 small village, single-family, RS8 large village, RS9 large, single-family, RT2 townhouse residential, P1 civic institutional, and P5 special park to facilitate the development of approximately 165 single-family residential lots, a future townhouse site, a streamside protection area, and a neighborhood park. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaws numbers 4317 and 4318. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? Third and final time, any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Item five, bylaw numbers 4310 and 4311-2012, an application to revise the land use designation and zoning of 1123 Westwood Street.
Your Worship and members of council, my name is Michael Dollywell, development planner with the city. The subject site is located on the southeast corner of Westwood Street and Lincoln Avenue and located within the city center. The site is within 800 meters of the future Coquitlam Central and Douglas College Evergreen Line stations, and within 400 meters of the potential Lincoln Avenue station. The site is currently designated general commercial. The adjacent land to the west is designated general commercial to the east, high-density apartment residential, to the north, park, and the properties to the south in Port Coquitlam are designated neighborhood commercial and townhouse residential in the Port Coquitlam official community plan. The current zoning on the site is C2 general commercial. The site is currently undeveloped. The applicant seeks to redesignate the site to city center commercial and rezone the site to C4 city center commercial to accommodate the development of a 34-story mixed-use residential tower with 239 apartments, four townhouses, and 2,415 square meters, or 26,000 square feet, of commercial and office space. The staff are recommending second and third readings to OCP amendment bylaw 4310-2012 and zoning amendment bylaw number 4311-2012.
Mr. Dollywell, there were no questions about either Erika's or the other projects, so we'll see how it goes. Counselor Reamer.
Thank you. Also, I just would like to see slide two, please.
Okay.
It flashed by us very quickly.
Slide number two. Is that that one, or?
No, keep going. Yeah, the transit one.
Transit one. Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. These are 400 and 800 radius, right?
Right, right. Thank you.
That's helpful, okay. Thank you. And we have a speaker's list. The applicant is Beau Jarvis, ONI group. Yeah, 30550 Robinson.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. My name is Beau Jarvis. I'm a representative of the ONI group, and I have here Dion de La Salle, who is with the ONI group, as well as Robert Sakozzi of Robert Sakozzi Architecture. We just have a very brief PowerPoint presentation regarding this project. It won't take very much of your time. Essentially, I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide because Michael Dollywell did a fairly good job of providing some context around our site. I'll just move on. North elevation of the site, you also saw this in Michael's presentation, but just briefly, you'll note that this is essentially the elevation as if you were standing on Lincoln Avenue and facing our building, facing back south. They call that the north elevation. You'll note that we have townhomes on the west, we have a podium that's essentially facilitating our parcade in the middle, we have our office component on the east, and obviously our tower in the middle. I'm just going to move to the south elevation here, and essentially, you'll notice that this is the elevation that would be facing property owners that are, I guess, our neighbors to the south, which I believe are across the border in Port Coquitlam. There's a number of initiatives that we have essentially implemented, I would say, and I'll get into that in a couple of slides here, but as it relates to the south elevation that's facing the neighbors. So a number of issues that came up during the process through of the application for this rezoning, in dealing with both the staff, as well as some of the neighbors, and some of the comments that have come in at our open house, as well as, I believe, to members of council, were essentially to do with mass of the podium and the fact that we were, I guess, materials and treatment of the south elevation, the elevation that the neighboring property owners need to look at. So this is a rendering that we did, and we're trying to essentially depict the mass of the development that is adjacent to Woodland Place. So this is our townhome component, and this is looking through Woodland Place back at our development. We tried to respect the form and character of Woodland Place on this component of our development, and that's what we're trying to depict in this slide. This is again...
Sorry, the perspective of that was from the lane, I guess it's a...
Pardon me?
The perspective of that was from the lane, or the, I guess, the private driveway of Woodland.
It's from, actually, the private road inside Woodland Place, looking north at our development. I'll just actually, to give you better perspective, I'll fast-forward to another slide here, just to clarify that, or maybe I won't.
Well, I see the aerial, well, okay, so that lane there.
Now I've done it. Sorry about that. I'll get to it. Sorry, this is, it looks like it's a big file.
Leave the questions standing.
Getting back to the, this is sort of a blown-up context slide depicting the south elevation. A number of concerns were raised, again, with respect to the treatment of the facade of this, of this tower, in particular, the south elevation, and what we were going to do to try and lessen the impact of the podium on our neighbors. Some of the initiatives that we have implemented here are, you can see that we've mixed it with treated concrete and glazing, that would be more spandrel glass or an opaque glazing to give the appearance of breaking up the mass of windows. We would also, with the treated concrete component, we're basically going to be setting up or constructing a mechanism that, it's like a wire mechanism that allows creeping plants to grow. It actually, to my knowledge, fills in within about two years' time, and so it's essentially going to be a green screen of that facade. These are some of the things that we've, you know, again, done to try and lessen the impact of the podium. One of the other things that's significant that we did was, there used to be a five-story podium here. This is a three-story podium, and we used to have five stories of above-grade parking. And what we did is we looked to manipulate the grades, as well as take and excavate for a further P to P2, essentially, so rather than one level of underground parking, we're actually going with two levels of underground parking. It's not a cheap option, but we felt it was a much, I guess, better option. So we really were able to bring this podium down from five stories to three stories, and I think that that lessens the impact significantly. This is our parcade section, and to my point, so we're talking about five stories, or sorry, six stories of parking, two are underground, whereas four are above-grade. And then the part that really sticks out of the, out of grade is this part and up here. This, I think, will help you, Mayor Stewart, this was the slide, I was trying to get you to clarify your point. So that was essentially taken from this point right here, if you...
Yeah.
Sorry, you can't see that.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, so looking back in that direction was that rendering. So looking at those townhomes from the driveway here at Woodland Place. Couple of other things we did here was obviously tried to shift our townhome component of this development as far back from Woodland Place as possible. We also had a townhome here in the original plan, and we removed it altogether to try and create a little bit more open space. Podium level, this is just to really give you an idea, bird's-eye view of the development itself. Again, we have the townhome component here, we have our podium, which is, this is on the, essentially, the roof over top of the parcade. It's also the home to a significant amount of our amenities, pool, there's a gym here, et cetera. This is the roof of the office building, obviously, Westwood and Lincoln. Again, just to, more than anything, give you context. Dion's going to just speak to proximity to transit, and obviously, if you have any questions for our architect, we have him here, ready.
We came out last week to participate in the open house for the TDS last Thursday, and just wanted to speak real quickly to the core objectives here. Number one being creating a compact, complete neighborhood. This does, it's obviously a mixed-use development with office, commercial, as well as residential. It's obviously very close to transit, and to promote sustainable transportation, we're going, planning to over-provide bicycle parking, bicycle shower facilities, and really encourage the residents to, to take advantage of the proximity, biking and walking distance right to the town center. Also, the, it's been a very challenging site with the shape and whatnot, and we have, you know, worked hard to, to move forward here with a 13% parking variance to manage the, the parking issue, and implement high-quality urban design. We have slimmed the floor plates up twice in the tower, about two-thirds way up the tower, they shrink by about 1,000 square feet, and then again at the top, at the penthouse I guess, yeah, moving forward, if there's any specific questions about the, the urban design, Rob Sakozzi's here to answer those questions.
Okay. I see none. Thank you very much. You're hanging around for the evening, though.
Yeah.
There may be questions coming up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kathy Yau at number 16, 3685 Woodland Drive.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, to have us be here. Sitting behind me is from my neighbors of the nine units of townhomes, children also, and I have one neighbor, her name is Lana, she'll also continue to talk with you. My first part is that our position with regards to this project, three owners representing our neighborhood to attend the open house held in April by ONI, and we represent not only our nine owners and also 40 in total residents, but also 169 residents in Tri-City's. And we have a significant concern with the project, with this high-density design, in large part because it is too close to our properties, and it will cause huge negative impact to our current quiet and green-screened natural surroundings. We were informed that there would be more than 130 parking lots added into this 33-story multifunctional tower. That really means over 200 vehicles would enter into or exit from the tower 24 hours, seven days, seven days a week. We then will be suffering from less privacy, less safety, worse air pollution, higher volume of noises, and heavier traffic in the neighborhood. That would very much discourage bike riders to use the roads, and also not good for the children to walk in this much heavier traffic roads. In short, the whole quality of our nestled living will be sacrificed and taken away by ONI project. And also, we have a concern about the processing, process of the, the project. We were told by ONI representative in April 2012 open house that the property was purchased by ONI in November last year. If this is true, then my question is, why the property has not been taken care of by the new owner, ONI, since one year before? And everyone, passengers, can see the liters and closings thrown into, into this property since then, and nobody takes cares of that. But before ONI became the new owner, we see City of Coquitlam taking care of the grass, and also the, the grass along the Lincoln Avenue, along the fence. So city councillors and the mayor, please tell us, when exactly ONI started to own the property? Because we question whether ONI is the responsible builder for this community of our neighborhood. My second...
I will actually, I'll get an answer to that. When was the closing of this? Does anyone have a closing? Mr. Stanishev?
Sorry, I cannot hear you.
It was November 30th.
November 30th, okay.
Everyone can walk out of this evening room and have a look, and all the grass, wild grass growing there, and all the liters thrown by the homeless people or whoever, nobody taking care of. So the second part is that we are advised by local residents who have been living in this area over 20 years, that no Lincoln Avenue separated the Glen Park at all. If this is the truth, then my question to city councillors and the mayor, please tell us, when the south side of Glen Green Woods land was redesignated as general commercial zone? I asked that particular question to Michael and the representative of ONI, and so far, I haven't got any reply yet, in written or by phone. So our children are here, and we, as adults, we need to educate them, the land where trees and grass grow is called woods, okay? It's only the people to name it as kind of a commercial in general or something else. Historically, Coquitlam has been given a very decent name in Chinese as of Gao Guilin, literally translated into noble forest in English. If forest is removed one by one, how would Coquitlam keep its nobility? Whether it's a port or not a port? City of Coquitlam is obliged to engage our residents, not only in Porco, but also Coquitlam, to provide input. I, I'm thankful that even during a very constrained timeframe, I already got very, very vigorous response from our neighborhood. In your package, you will see 169 residents, not only living in this area affected, but also in Tri-City. They're really, really concerned that all these trees are taken away one by one. And actually, those trees along the both sides of Lincoln Road grow semestrically, and they are so beautiful, and they really symbolize a kind of going home if you travel from east, from west to east. And we see that Westwood Avenue is a kind of dividing road, separating commercial and residential. So this really concern, and my daughter, she said that she came to Canada to be inspired by trees, and once these trees are out...
You're going to have, you're going to have to wrap up, though.
Yeah, that's, that's my second point. So we need to have the proof from the city that when that woods was renamed as a commercial, general commercial, rather than park or woods.
Actually, I don't think it's ever been a park. It's never, it's always been zoned as being developable, in the same way that the, that the land south of the Coquitlam, Port Coquitlam boundary is also going to be developed at some point, and so I, I think you may be wrong there. Your time is up, though. Please feel free to come back up if you, if you still have some more.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Counselor Secora has a question. Sorry.
Ma'am, you come forward, please?
Sorry, one, sorry.
Would you come?
No, back to her. I'm sorry, Counselor Secora has a question for her.
I'd like to ask you a question. Is 778, is that your home number?
3684, unit 16 is my home phone, home address. And 778...
Your phone number.
778-285-5703.
That's a cell number.
No, that's a home phone.
That's home, so...
Yes.
...Coquitlam, that's 778...
Yes, of course, yeah.
Everybody in the mainland has that for either cell or some houses.
Yeah. And I got that phone call, I got a phone from Teresa this afternoon.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Lana Izibayeva, Lana Izibayeva. Is I close?
Thank you. Okay, my partner. In the project, open house held in April 2012, representatives of affected neighborhoods clearly expressed that we don't need to waste money in buildings and building a third stop of Evergreen Line at Lincoln Avenue and Punchway, because this is not affordable to have three stops in total with a short distance of two kilometers from Douglas College to Coquitlam Central train.
Okay, my partner. In the project, open house held in April 2012, representatives of affected neighborhoods clearly expressed that we don't need to waste money in buildings and building a third stop of Evergreen Line at Lincoln Avenue and Punchway, because this is not affordable to have three stops in total with a short distance of 2 kilometers from Douglas College to Coquitlam Central Train. Why does city wants to increase high density in order to justify an unnecessary Skytrain stop at Lincoln? Do you guys believe it's affordable by taxpayers or it's essential need in this area? Nine owners and all residents in the complex came from diverse cultural backgrounds and countries, Korea, mainland, China, Russia, Taiwan, and Afghanistan. We had left behind everything in our original countries and bought our first homes at the current premises in Porcoquitlam. The battle is so close to nestled homes and communities by the side of Porco, Westwood-Lincoln Woodland Drive boundary. It's a battle against misconduct behaviors that violate Bible-based Canadian values, love your neighbors. Setting schemes in, not in favor of neighbors, in which City of Coquitlam and ONI, real estate developer, demonstrate is rebelling the core Canadian value that the new immigrant residents pursue and settle for a new home country. We believe in most Canadian value in people, planet, and profit. When people are not put into consideration as priority in decision-making, how will the planet and profit end up with? Losing oases, forests, or soils happens once without stopping and control. It will happen again and again, but bad behaviors are contagious. Now it's at my door this time, and maybe at your door sooner or later. We must stand our faith and say no. Okay, so, this is my speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Secora, did you have anything on this? No? Okay. Counselor Reed.
Yes, thank you. Through to staff, I'd like to discuss the parking. And we have 52 units, or 52 less spots, correct? Which is a tremendous, which to me is a lot in that particular area. That's a tight corner, and we already have parking problems there now. Has there been any discussion with the developer with respect to building on another site in close proximity? Or has there been any discussion on selling some units without parking spots, which would help create a bit of affordability and not require a parking spot?
Your worship, yes, there's a shortfall of a total of 57 stalls. The majority of those, 52, are the residential. We're not varying one bedroom, we're not varying visitor, or the applicant isn't varying those. There, there have been some discussions with the applicant. They are proposing some additional bike storage. They're also proposing some transit demand management measures, transportation measures, including a rideshare vehicle stall. The, the measures noted by Counselor Reed have not been discussed with the developer so far.
Okay, so it's, if one wanted to, could, could those discussions come between third and fourth, or would they be better, be better to come between second and third readings?
Your worship, council can provide staff direction, as conditions to the rezoning bylaw, so it would be up to council to provide direction to staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson.
I appreciate Counselor Reed raising that. It brought, drew my attention to the TransLink letter, that's in our package, that spoke to the shared parking arrangement for commercial and residential use, and we had some discussion earlier today about some angst about some of those shared parking challenges. But also, the other part of this letter, I just want to note, and the proponent talked about having shower facilities, but TransLink notes that in terms of utilization of the shower facilities, that you often need separate, one for male, one for female, that isn't being provided for. And they also talk about the planned shared bicycle routes along Lincoln and Westwood, but we don't really have any plans for that. So I'd like to have a bit more conversation about that. I mean, I appreciate that this is a flat part of town, people can use those methods for getting around in terms of easing some of the parking challenges, but we need to make sure the infrastructure supports that. Thank you.
Just clarification, what page were you reading from?
It's in our package. It was read... There's no page number.
Package was sent last week. Suzanne Ma.
Hello, mayors and councillors. My name is Suzanne Ma, and also representative, my husband, Jang Yun, do the speech today. So I'm the owner of the Unit 12, 3685 Woodland Drive. Before you discuss the rezoning issue, please think...
Ms. Ma, Ms. Ma, could you pull the microphone down just a little bit?
Okay.
There we go, thank you.
Please think about these questions. First, will there be shadowing and loss of sunlight for neighbor building? The answer is yes. Second, will there be loss of privacy for neighbors? The answer is yes. Will there be a loss of green space? Yes, definitely. Will the large increase in density have a negative impact? Yes. The traffic, the safety, and noise problem. Do you have long-term plan for this? And the next, how will existing community service like schools and libraries accommodate new residents from this? I heard the neighbor school, like La Elementary School, don't have enough space for the new The last one is the high-rise building qualified with the building code. Example, the safety distance between the, the two buildings, like high-rise and the neighbor building, and also the high-rise building with the underground parking lot affect the neighbor's building foundation or not? So, thank, so hope council members to think about these concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor O'Neill.
Yeah, there were some very specific questions, and I'm thinking maybe either the representatives from ONI could answer there, or, or staff. I picked out a few of them. One, one of the very first questions had to deal with, will there be shadows cast over the neighborhood to the south of the building, by this building? And I, I don't think we need staff to answer that. This, this high-rise is going to be to the north of, of the, of the area that most of you live in, Porcoquitlam, so there's not going to be a shadow problem. I'd like to get a, an answer from somebody on the technical side about the question that was raised about effect of digging several tens of meters down to build, build a, the foundation and the underground parking lot. Will that have an effect on foundations of buildings around? I think we need that answer.
Let's start with, how, how deep are we digging? I know it's not several tens of meters, but, Mr. McIntyre.
Thanks, your worship. May it help us in, in explaining that. If, Carrie, if you wouldn't mind, if, if you go to the proponent's PowerPoint presentation, and there's one slide there, I think where Beau was trying to show the location of the, the townhouses to the south relative to their townhouse units, and so you can just see the proximity there between the, the buildings.
All right. It's taking a while to load.
Okay. Well, when the slide does come up, we'll, I think we'll see there's a fair separation distance between the existing townhouse units, the residents are in on the, the Porcoquitlam side, and what is proposed on the north side.
Is it seven? No, it's not seven.
I was hoping for an overview slide that would show the entire site relative to, to the townhouses. I think what it does indicate with the...
Let's try seven.
With, with the layout here, with the townhouses, yeah, okay, so, all right. And so what you see there, towards the bottom of the screen, sort of shaded in the middle, those would be the existing townhouses on, on the street to the south in Porcoquitlam. And so what you see there is sort of the east end of the proposed project, sort of the tail end where the, the townhouse units are, and the start of the parcade. So you can see that, that, that locational relationship. So the bulk of the proposed building, that is the parcade, is to the west, and the tower is even further to the west, and then the office tower is even further to the west out on Westwood. So there's, there's a little bit of a, there's a relationship here between certain, the, the existing units are separated and located away from the, the main bulk of the building. As for the actual set distances, I'd ask you to Raoul or Michael to help me with that one.
Yes, thanks, Jim. Your worship, there's some numbers noted on the, on the plan, they're pretty small to read. There, there's the smallest distance to the, I guess the building further to the, to the west, it looks like is 11.5 feet to the edge of the parcade structure, although further to the, to the, to the east, the buildings are 25 feet away. So the closest distance looks like it's about 11 and a half feet.
So I think for the point of clarification here, regardless of whether it's 12 feet away or 20 feet away, are modern construction techniques and excavation techniques up to the standard that, regardless of how far away it is, that, that, there's all due steps taken to ensure that surrounding buildings and their foundations are not affected adversely?
Your worship, that is correct. We have full indemnities and certifications and letters of assurance from all professionals. We've had no issues of this nature. And we're quite satisfied that ONI have the professionals to, to take, take on this kind of work. We've had no concerns in that regard at all.
Okay, thank you.
Along the same lines, how deep is the excavation?
Your worship, I'd have to ask ONI specifically. I know there's two, two levels of underground parcade, the level to which they have to dig to that level, perhaps they have that specific information.
I assume that would be in the area of parking space number 33 or something like that, and down from there.
Correct.
Not in the area where the townhouses are.
Correct, yes.
If you have an answer, please come forward.
We're about two and a half levels of parking below grade, which equates to about 10 meters for excavation.
Yeah, 10 meters. Okay. Counselor Robinson, was it on...
One ten's of meter, thank you.
One ten's of meter.
I said several tens of meters, and it's just one ten of meters.
Yes, a 10-meter excavation, yeah, for three levels, yeah.
Counselor Robinson.
So there was another question about school capacity, and we heard from School District 43 about school capacity. We're, we're building other high-rises in this neighborhood as well, and it's a good question.
Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, your worship. Just by coincidence, we were meeting with School District staff last week, and they are being pleasantly surprised with the, for the elementary school, the student generation coming over our, our city center. It's not just young households, or singles and that, and couples, it's, it's families too. So the School District is, is monitoring that. They are seeing, certainly with the new Glen School, the enrollments are up there, but they're monitoring that, and they want to accommodate additional students as, as they, as they show up at their door.
So they're on top of it, and they're prepared to absorb whatever, whatever comes into this neighborhood?
There's some things that work out, that, that's best for them to present that and...
Okay, thank you.
Considering how much density we're planning in that area, one would, one would think, yeah, that's a good question. Counselor Reed.
Sorry to do this to you, but this is such a lot of reading to find what I'm looking for. The mix of the suites, do you have it? Would the developer have it, Mr. McIntyre?
Please step forward.
Yes, your worship, it looks like, and this could change, oh, you're up.
Well, I don't want to go through this.
We do have some numbers, but please, maybe it's better if the applicant...
It's four townhomes, 139 two-bedrooms, and 41 bedrooms.
132 and...
So 139 two-bedrooms, 40...
41 bedroom, 193 two-bedroom, and four townhomes.
That's right.
Total of 237 units.
And the square footage approximately? The two bedrooms would be eight or nine?
Yeah, we're still working on the, the layouts.
Okay. This means a great deal to me, the mix, because of the parking, so...
So the mix is staying there, you don't have the square footage, or the, you're, you're pretty close to the mix.
The mix is quite close, yeah. It's just more the, the layouts right now that we've been working on. So, yeah, this is the mix that we're moving forward with at this time.
Only 41 bedroom. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It, it hasn't been raised yet, but I, I made a note of it earlier. There was a question of whether Woodland Drive remains a cul-de-sac. I assume it does. It's a Porcoquitlam cul-de-sac, it's not ours to change, but I assume it stays a cul-de-sac and doesn't go through.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm glad you've come back to that question, because I noticed there was some comments and questions about that, and if, if I could, just going back a little bit in time, actually many years back in time, and this is probably more than 10, and it may not quite as long ago as 15 years ago, but some of the residents in that townhouse project to the south in Porcoquitlam may not know or realize that Pipeline Road used to go right through. It, it didn't stop, it didn't tee at Lincoln, it went straight on through into Porcoquitlam, and it came out down near where the shopping center is, down by the Shell Station, and that was all changed. And that was about 10, 12 years ago. And at that time, there was a connection through at Lincoln, because there was a trailer park. And before the trailer park was redeveloped, the ones at Glen Trailer Park, Porcoquitlam had actually closed off, yeah, this, this is the one here, thank you very much. Porcoquitlam proceeded to close off Pipeline. If I can have a laser pointer? Doesn't work. Yeah, the mouse? Okay, all right, thanks, Raoul. Where are your mouse? Okay. Yeah, here's, here's Pipeline Road, coming south. This is Windsor Gate, previously Windsor-Glen. And Pipeline used to, many years ago, goes straight on through, all the way down, tied back out to Westwood here. And it was a real busy, a lot of traffic. There was concern, I think, in this neighborhood about the, the rat running through there, and so Porcoquitlam went and closed off Pipeline Road at this point. Lincoln existed in Coquitlam for many years, as far as I can recall, but it was a much narrower road. It was, it had gravel shoulders, and it went through a bunch of trees. The trees on the north side was always Glen Park, that was long intended to be a park. This was a leftover residual property that was sort of located between Lincoln Avenue and the Porcoquitlam boundary, so it was never intended to be park, it was always going to be something else, likely commercial, given these proximity and adjacencies here. So Pipeline Road was closed off, and so that sort of contained this as a, it's kind of secluded neighborhood all done to itself. And so basically, you have a cul-de-sac up here. I haven't been in there for a number of years, but it leaves a cul-de-sac there. There's townhouses, there's a row of single-family homes, they're, again, maybe eight, nine years old, in through this area here. So that, that was sort of the, the background on the, the road network through the area. Now, when Polygon did the Windsor Gate project, part of the, the off-site servicing that they were asked to, to provide was the upgrade of this intersection, this civilized intersection, upgraded Pipeline Road through this area here, and did some work on the extension of Lincoln through here and at the intersection. So that's how that road came to be like that. I think that was it. Anything else, your worship?
No, I was just, I wanted to be able to answer that one question that has been raised a couple of times in letters, so...
It used to be our fire hall leadership.
Yes, our fire hall was on this property.
Yeah, that's before my time.
Why did I ask you that?
Yes.
The fire hall was at the west end of the, the subject property.
Right over there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, many years ago.
Fire one day.
Yeah. And so, I'm sorry, the other thing I just wanted to point out, now, now you can see in the air photo what was shown in that, um, the plan provided by ONI that had the proposed building location and the existing townhouses. And so you can see this relationship. Here's the, the townhouses. They're really, um, squeezed toward the east side of, of the site, of this block. They're over, up against the road here. And about two-thirds of the property adjacent is, um, vacant, I think it was an older single-family home that sits in here. So really, the immediate adjacency between the proposed project and the existing townhouses is really down, as I said, at the east end, sort of the tail end of the site here.
And the tower's been situated by the.
And the tower would be proposed in this area here, commercial building there, and the townhouses down there.
Good. Okay. We've delayed long enough, we can go to the next speaker, I think. Suzanne, thank you. Vanessa Nielsen. Vanessa? No? We'll come back to you. Juanith Nielsen? No? Vanessa? Either one of the Nielsen's here? No? That's two, six, four, eight, Lincoln. Okay. That's all the speakers I had on the list, so are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? I'm going to ask one more time for either one Vanessa or Juanith Nielsen. Seeing none, I declare this item and the public. Hmm? I'm sorry?
It's closed.
Oh, you're right. Okay. There was a, our first speaker, Catherine Yao, I think it was, may, may have more, more to say that she didn't get a chance to say. Did you want to?
I just have a quick notice about that map, uh, showed previously about the exit. I think that's, uh, my understanding from the first open house, um, there's the one exit, very, at the triangle side, in the middle of the triangle side. Um, but, but, but just a moment ago, I see that red cross is very close to the cul-de-sac. So can I have a kind of clear answer, how many meters the exit is from the traffic light?
Yeah, well, there's no underground parking under the townhouses, so I assume it's west of the townhouses. Do we have the exact location?
It seems to me that the, the, the building design was changed so frequently since last open house in April.
All right, well, at, at this point, the plans that are before us, and so let's have a look at where that parking exit is, and I think it was two or three slides forward.
Can anybody help me to understand how many meters?
Uh, yes, your worship, we are, um, there's a driveway on Lincoln Avenue, it's right in, right out. We're just getting on the plan and giving you an idea on, on distances. It's, uh.
Mike, do we have a number? So it's about.
It's in the order of about a hundred and fifty feet, it looks like. When I just, you know, scale off, it's about fifty feet to the townhouse, roughly a hundred and twenty feet, I would say, to the, to the driveway. But we're getting a more precise location.
Yeah, it looks like a good estimate.
Oh, it's, it's just around two hundred feet, I'm told, from the edge of the property.
It's two hundred?
It's around two hundred feet from the edge of the, the eastern edge of the property, right there, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's at least a hundred and twenty feet.
Yeah.
And, um, the, the reason we, I'm asking this, because we lived there day, day by day, and we saw that the traffic's getting more busy and busier, and even without having those high towers, high towers built by the Windsor, and we see a lot of more pollution right now. And we cannot imagine, you know, how worse it will be when you have more vehicles coming out of that building. And particularly, we feel very shocked that you built that, uh, commercial building. That really means a lot.
Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Ms. Yao, um, you live in these townhouses just to the south of, of the project, correct? The proposed project?
My unit number is sixteen.
Yeah, so you live in just south of that. Now, what street do you use to get in and out of your home? Are you using which street? Is it Woodland Drive?
Yes.
That's a part of Pipeline that's, that was Pipeline, now it's cut off, and now it's Woodland. So when you're coming and going from your house, you can't go to the north, you go to the south, so you're, you, you, you're always going away from, from what will be this proposed new building, right?
You are understanding right, and we chose to buy this house just because there's a cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, yeah.
It's quiet, and it's quite a very peaceful and quiet place for kids.
Right.
To have activities there.
So just, just so you're clear here, this cul-de-sac will stay in place, and it's my understanding of this is that none of the traffic, uh, from this proposed project will exit or enter, enter off of Woodland. It's all going to be Lincoln. And so Woodland will not be affected. The traffic from this proposed project is not intended to go onto Woodland, there's no way it can get there.
Yes, personally, I see no difference. But I'm, as I said earlier, I'm representing not only myself as owner and resident of my home, but also representing those people who live in the Polygon current.
Oh, okay.
Buildings, and they really have a concern. And those kind of, uh, single houses, um, nine years old, they, they are very concerned about the traffic getting worse, because right now, they cannot have any place to park in front their door, because of, a lot of passengers or visitors just pack their cars temporarily, you know, taking all the space out. So adding two hundred more vehicles every day is really mess. Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And now I'll do it one last time. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing closed. In a few minutes, we'll.